I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee?
The motion.
Motion by Mr. Demodica, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is student government, student activities. Gentlemen, good evening.
My name is Andrew Rieger. I'm a senior college faculty at the University of New York. I'm a member of the student council. I have activities in the faculty schoolroom and I would like to come to the board to give you a word of thanks and to the class. Also, in the event of a world ceremony, I would like to give you a box of chocolates. I would also prefer to pay to the desk to receive their plates from the middle of the schoolroom, which is in the front door. Because in the hall, we also have a first seat to the senior years, so they're both very special, I presume that we can go through, so if you have to, we can come in. And for our future events, we have coming up the first address hopefully in another second to the fund it, and that's where we collect some kind of proof depending on whether they still are given. Then we have still coming up with it in another nine, two to fourteen.
There was no vote taken at the meeting. And I need a vote to share the minutes of the executive session. You're on the ball, Mrs. Demodica, thank you. Second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Superintendent Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a few minutes to give the committee and the audience a quick overview as to where we are with some of our priority initiatives in the district during the school year. And there's a lot of good work taking place. And I think one of the things that I'm most pleased to see is that the thinking map initiative is really taking off. Remember, all students in grades K through eight have been exposed to these thinking maps. And remember, there are eight thinking maps that students are learning. And the plan is to implement one map per week. So we're getting close to the point where all eight maps have been introduced. The school leadership and teachers have been doing a great job of preparing staff to teach students the thinking map for that particular week. They're using their faculty meeting time to review that information with teachers. And then teachers are in turn sharing it with students. And if you walk into, if you've had a chance to visit any of our schools, you'll see that there are thinking maps all over the place. And remember, the beauty of thinking maps is that it is a tool for learning. So not only are we teaching students important content that they need to know, this is a tool that will help them to learn. And next year, we're K through eight this year. Next year, we're going to be implementing the thinking maps in grades nine through twelve. The reason that we didn't do it this year is because we wanted to focus our attention on implementing the one-to-one initiative in the high school. So we're going to be a K-12 thinking map district, which is really exciting. And I think one of the most exciting things about this whole process is that we have teacher trainers who have already had five days of professional development, and they are getting one more day that's already been scheduled in December. They actually had one this week on Tuesday. So these are the teachers who are trained to train all of our teachers in the district. So the beauty of this thinking map process is that our teachers, we have trained teachers who are in turn training their colleagues in all seven of our schools right now. And next year, again, it will be the high school. So we're really excited about thinking maps and the skills that that provides our students. I just wanted to talk briefly about self-regulated strategy development. This is a writing process that we piloted at BF Norton. The teachers, veteran teachers, teachers who have been teaching for many, many, many years. I'll give you an example. We had a district curriculum committee meeting on Monday. Linda Ionetta is a former Cumberland Teacher of the Year, by the way. She is a fourth grade teacher. She's also certified in ELL. She's impressive. And, you know, the sort of person you want your child to have as a teacher. And she reported to the group that this SRSD process, which they're learning, is the best program that she has been exposed to in all her years of teaching. And she didn't say exactly how many years that was, but it was, in addition, it was more than 20. Let me just say that. So, and coincidentally, there was a middle school teacher who reported that the students from BF Norton are doing exceptionally well on their writing in grade six. So remember, those teachers in grade six are just getting trained now in both middle schools. And we are in the process of training all of the fifth grade teachers in the district so that when their students go to both middle schools, they would have had this training. And we are, as I said, in the process of training all ELA and social studies teachers in both middle schools so that they're prepared to continue this, implementing this initiative because our students are going to be looking for that continuity as they move from grade five to grade six. So we are really excited about SRSD. It is a phenomenal program. And we're, it's going to take some time. And it requires a tremendous amount of professional development. But I just want to give you one little, share one little thing that I heard recently. It was actually a student who was in one of the, involved in one of the SRA, SRSD lessons, Jess Maceda, a teacher at BF Norton School, had volunteered to be videotaped. So she was actually teaching her students an SRSD lesson. And these students are required to do some really challenging work and some really challenging writing. That is aligned, by the way, to the Common Core standards. And so they were required to do something that was particularly challenging, and you could see that they were struggling. A part of this process is positive self-talk. And without, without the teacher in any way, sort of, you know, planting the seed for a student to say anything, this little boy raises his hand, fourth grade boy, raises his hand and says, because the teacher said, "I can see that some of you are struggling with this." And the little boy says, "Well, it's better to try and fail than to not try at all." Totally unsolicited. That's part of the positive self-talk that is a part of this. I mean, what is better than that? So, so that's, so continuing on to the videotaping of lessons and how they're used for professional development, that, that lesson that Jess Maceda did and many others at BF Norton are being videotaped so that teachers can watch themselves. And Jess Maceda, who had a chance to see herself teach the lesson after, had a chance to review her own and reflect on her own teaching based on watching this video. And she was kind of surprised by some of the things that she did. The beauty of the video is what we think we're doing and what we're doing may be two different things. So it really is a really useful tool. And to take it a step further, her colleagues who didn't get a chance to see her teach that lesson, and the room was filled with adults, by the way, in addition to the students. So, you know, there was a, you know, I admire her courage for volunteering to do this. But other teachers can watch that video to see how Jess did it and how it might help them. And they might even have some suggestions for her. So BF Norton, Deb Rude is leading the charge on the use of video at BF Norton School, which is a wonderful teaching and learning tool. And now the high school, having heard that, has asked for a camera and tripod. And Mr. Chandler has already purchased that with professional development funds. So they're going to be using a camera, you know, to do some professional development and evaluation work in the high school. So we're really excited with, with the good work that is happening in this district around, with the, with our professional development work. And I just wanted to, to share that with, with all of you.
Questions for Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Duffy?
It's quick, and you might not be able to answer it now, maybe, maybe for a future meeting. But is there a quick update on the Chromebook at the high school at this time?
You know, I was actually going to mention something about that as well. Because by all accounts, the, that initiative is, is doing really well. And, you know, you hear these anecdotes, these stories, unsolicited stories about how teachers who have a reputation for being a little on the traditional side are like really getting into using the Chromebook in their teaching. I could give you some examples. I'm not going to do that, but I could. And so, and I actually, Jared Cardoza, we should actually, we'll bring him in during the next meeting, at the next meeting or the meeting after, because he was a Golden Apple recipient. And the students really like him. So I actually went into his class to congratulate him because I was not available to be there when Channel 10 was there to give him the award. So I went in later on that day. And he had a classroom, I think most of the students were ninth graders. And I had a chance to talk to them a little bit about, you know, how they felt about the Chromebook. Now, remember, these students had it in grade eight. So I'm thinking, you know, these, you know, the teachers in grade eight, by the end of the school year, were probably a little more advanced than our teachers in the high school because they're just being exposed to this for the first time. So I asked them, you know, "How, how are things going? Are all teachers using the Chromebook? Are they using them as effectively as the teachers in the eighth grade?" And they all reported, no one shook their head no. And they were all, they were all really positive about the way that teachers were using them in the classroom. So I know that, you know, they have plans in place to provide all kinds of, of training on Wednesdays, during early release Wednesdays for teachers. Plus, they're providing optional volunteer opportunities for, for teachers on, I know that they're doing it on Tuesdays as well. So if there's, on this particular day, they, they offer training on, on different apps. And, and teachers, teachers are taking advantage of that. We're actually, have had conversations with Mike about how teachers want more, which is a wonderful thing. So, so to answer your question, Mr. Duffy, you know, the, the feedback so far, and we should probably do a survey or something just to get, you know, some more specific feedback. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's been very positive so far.
Thank you. Yeah, and maybe at some point in the future, maybe it's after the new year, I'm not sure, but maybe a more formal presentation might be helpful for us and the community as a whole because they made the investment into them as well. But I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Moving on, next item on the agenda is chairperson's report. We have tentatively scheduled the task, budget task force meeting for Tuesday. November 10th will be the first one. Agenda will be following probably within the next week or so from Chairperson Duffy. Next item on the agenda is report of standing committee, payment of bills. Mr. Demodica?
Madam Chair, there were no payment of bills tonight.
I didn't miss the agenda item, and there's no payment of bills. All right, let's skip, skip down a few then. Fiscal management subcommittee update.
Fiscal did meet tonight. We got a update from the business manager on the, on this year's budget going forward, where we stand for the first couple of, first quarter. We have two items to discuss tonight for a vote. One is to move some money within the special ed department. And we have to amend our budget for the full year to include the $500,000 that the town gave us for the HSA. So those are the two items that we had on our agenda tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, we did meet on Tuesday night. We had a full agenda. We discussed many policies, actually. I will go into more detail for all of them. They're all going to come up. Some were tabled, but it was a good discussion, and we will take each policy in the next section.
Thank you. Mrs. Teal, achievement and communications?
Thank you. Achievement and communications met on Tuesday. We sort of had a planning meeting for our upcoming meetings for the presentations by the schools. Those meetings are going to take place November 10th, 17th, and December 8th and 15th. Over the course of those four meetings, all schools will have an opportunity to provide approximately a 30-minute presentation. We're going to work on providing sort of concise presentations that will eventually be put up on the website. So if you're unable to attend it, you can get an update on what's going on in each of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that was discussed briefly in achievement was related to the, the interventionists and the, the range of students in which they're able to address. And it would be great if we could have a little bit of an update on that. And maybe after they do the, the benchmarking, and I don't know when that is, but just to see if students are showing progress. I think that would be a really wonderful thing to, to learn more about. Yep, thanks. Comments from the public? Anyone here wish to speak this evening? Pretty quiet, apparently not. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Fiorello, I'm going to turn this over to you. I'm not sure which policies we are hearing and which ones we're not. So it's all up to you. It's on your shoulders.
Okay, the first policy is I-6, school-sponsored field trips of long duration. We have been discussing this for the last couple of months, actually. Some of the changes that we made was we increased the number of chaperones that were needed for each trip, one, one per 10 students. But of international trips, we went with one chaperone per five students. We also made a point of putting into policy that neither student nor teachers may consume alcohol regardless of the country and the laws of that country while on these trips, and that all school policies will be in effect during the trips. This is obviously a reaction to the problems that we had in the past. And we feel that at this time, this policy, the updated policy will address those concerns. Also, sometime in the winter, this policy is actually going to come back because we need to create an entire section on athletic trips. But that's going to be another whole endeavor. So at this point, I would just recommend, I would ask for the policy be read into the record, and we will be voting on that in the next section. J-15 fundraising, we are just setting up some guidelines, really, common sense guidelines that are mainly in place and some that we're putting into place that are observed by other organizations that fundraise. And that policy was tabled until our next meeting. K-2, use of school facilities. We have revisited this because, as you remember, we removed the custodial fees for the PTOs. And afterwards, we had realized that the language still existed for custodial fees to be charged to school groups such as cleft singers or band or what have you. So in policy, we did remove those, those fees for all school groups as well. And we'll be voting on that. And I would, I would ask, I'm sorry, that the new policy be read into the record. The new policy, G-15 gift acceptance, was not discussed. It was tabled until our next meeting. And J-23, students who are transgender or gender non-conforming, I would be asked, I would ask it be read into the record for the first time. This is a policy that we have been essentially mandated by state law to implement. Actually, I'm sorry, Dr. Santa, is that correct? Do we?
No. I'm sorry. We're not mandated to, but we are being proactive. We are, Dr. Santa did a lot of great work on this policy. We have decided to table it for further discussion to the next meeting because it's a brand-new policy, and I'm sure it's going to attract a lot of attention from the public. I'm sure there are points in it that some people will be uncomfortable with. However, it is a necessity to protect not only the civil rights, but just protect the students' best interests on both sides of the issue with a, with a firm policy. So I would urge everyone to read that policy and maybe attend the next policy meeting in November, where we will more than likely vote on, vote on that policy. And that is it.
So just to summarize, I-6 and K-2 are the only policies that the school committee would be taking any action on this evening?
That is correct.
All right, and those are both amended policies?
Yes.
And are the new policies and the tabled fundraising policy, are those on the district website?
I do not believe they are because they're not really, we're still in rough draft form.
Okay.
However, the J-23, the transgender and gender non-conforming policy, which is essentially in its final draft, but we just chose not to vote on it in the first meeting. That is, I believe, on the, on the, on the school website. And if it's not, we'll make sure it gets on there.
Okay. And one of the requests that we made on Mr. Duffy's behalf was to have Mr. Mitchell share with the administration at the high school to solicit some feedback from students. So I think that's part of the in-process activity as well. All right, so this is a, a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would wish to speak for or against these policies? Nope? All right, hearing none. We will call the public hearing closed at this point and move on to new business, school safety plan update. Mr. Mitchell, do you want to provide any highlights for this, or would you prefer that I summarize?
Well, it's, it's up to you, Madam Chair. Whatever you're, whatever you wish.
Okay. So this was an item that we did discuss in executive session. It is an obligation that we do have a school safety plan. And the committee heard some testimony provided by Dr. Masterson and Mr. Mitchell regarding improvements to the plan. And we would need to vote on the plan in order for Dr. Masterson to bring it forward to, I'm sorry, where does, where's its path next? Department of Education. Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the committee, excuse me, on the school safety plan update.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fiorello?
I know last year, when we did this plan, there were questions from the public as to why it was done in executive session. I wonder if Mr. Adams could just clarify that for us?
Sure thing.
If you could just clarify why the safety plan is done in executive session, not in open session?
Under Rhode Island General Laws 42, 46, 5, subsection 3, the discussion of safety and security issues can be done, and I think my advice would always be, should be done in executive session. However, any vote should be taken in open session. It doesn't mean that to disclose the substance of the safety plan, obviously, but the vote needs to be taken in, in open session, if there is one.
That works. Okay, pleasure of the committee on the school safety plan.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we approve the plan that was presented in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Demodica, second by Mr. Fiorello, and Mr. Dunin. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. And that, just for, to piggyback on what Mr. Fiorello, I think, was looking for clarification, school safety plan is confidential. It's not shared with anyone beyond the Department of Education and the, the school building administrator. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve overnight student field trip. CHS banned students from Montreal, Canada, April 2016? Mr. Mitchell?
Madam Chair, since we are in the process of revising the, the field trip of long-duration policy, we recommend that we hold on this, table this particular item until we, we agree on the revisions to the, to the policy.
I would need a motion to table item C. Motion by Mrs. Teal, second by Mr. Dunin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Demodica, I believe these are for you, SCR 2015-12 budget amendments and 2015-13.
Yes, Madam Chair, we discussed this tonight in finance. SCR 2015-12 is a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to amend the 2015-2016 budget. This relates to the special ed services. Dr. Santa has done some remarkable work cutting costs and bringing programs back to the district. And what we're doing here tonight is asking that we increase the special ed develop, professional development to $30,000, increase special ed supplies $6,000, increase special ed tech for $7,500, and we would decrease the line item for special ed tuitions by $43,500. This is cost neutral. It passed in committee three to zero. If you wanted to hear from Dr. Santa, she's available. It doesn't affect our budget this year going forward, and it actually, some of the program that they did with professional development actually saves the district quite amount of money if we had to send children out of district for services. So I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica moves passage of resolution SCR 2015-12. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
Next, Madam Chair, is SCR 2015-13, a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to amend the 2015-2016 budget from $61,828,944 to $62,378,944. This is, we had gotten a, an amount of $550,000 from the town for the HSA program, and we need to now account for that in our budget. And so we're increasing, increasing the Blue Cross claims by $450,000 and increasing the dental claims by $100,000. So that increases the budget by $550,000. And I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica moves passage of SCR 2015-13, a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to amend the 2015-16 budget from $61,828,944 to $62,378, $378,944. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
Is there a reason we're putting it into the medical and the dental line item?
Well, it was given to us by the town for those specific purposes, and so that's where it needs to be moved to. What'll happen is, at the end of the year, there'll be a reconciliation, and if it's less than $550,000, then the town will get a rebate, but otherwise, the district would get the $550,000.
Why would the town get a rebate?
It was for the, explained by Mr. Pignano, was for the business, the claims, if the claims weren't as high, that would be reimbursed. Would you come up? Alex, please.
The budget we originally passed, when we were thinking we might see savings from the HSAs, we actually reduced our claims for both dental and... savings from the HSAs, we actually reduced our claims for both dental and healthcare claims by $450 and $100,000. And I, I just thought that that probably wasn't the best way to present it. We should show our claims in dental what they are and the $550 that the mayor's given us, which should be maintenance of effort. We should put on the revenue side and show it there. So that's what basically I'm doing here. And so if you increase the expenditures by $550, you have to increase, you know, you increase both sides of the budget. That's why the budget's going to go up by $550,000. Did I make it clear?
The word rebate was used.
You had mentioned about the...
Oh, sure. Yeah, there was the, there was the, the mayor was going to give us $550,000 towards healthcare savings. Well, the HSA savings aren't going to be there, because of the unions wouldn't let us voluntarily, you know, off of that voluntary plan. So that, that, we didn't really have anyone sign up for that. But we are, we did go self-insured on the dental, and we're running a little bit, we probably will save something there. So we'll measure that savings, and in fairness, they were going to give us $550 toward savings. We saved $50,000, let's say, on dental. You know, then we, we would ask for $500,000. We'll adjust our budget at the end to show that appropriation, what they should be giving us. But that, you know, we've achieved a little bit of savings so far on the dental. We don't know what it'll be yet. It's projected right now through my September report, to be about $56,000. But we'll see, we'll see how it continues to, it's not a self-insured for claims.
But clarify the rebate piece.
They had, they had offered us $550,000, up to $550,000, if we went to, if we made two changes. One, the HSA, and one going self-insured on the dental. Well, we haven't been able to get the HSA off the ground, but we did go self-insured on dental. So if we were to save some portion, some amount of money on the dental, the arrangement was really up to $550. If we saved $50,000 on dental, they would real, they would give us $500,000 that we didn't achieve in savings, because, you know, the HSA didn't go forward. If we achieve all $100,000 on the dental, then they should be giving us $450,000. It was up to $550 in additional appropriation, if we didn't get the savings.
There were a number of factors that contributed to the reason we didn't secure the HSA.
Exactly.
One of which was the one that you mentioned, and there were certainly others. Is that accurate?
Well, I, I think the, I, yeah, I don't know if we would have achieved the full $550, because it did get off the ground a little bit later with, you know, some of the homework that could have been done, what didn't get done, you know.
Is there an option to revisit this, this year, or is it only?
I, I don't think it'll happen this year, in my opinion.
Where does it say anywhere that there'll be a rebate?
Doesn't say there, doesn't say there were a rebate. They said they would give us up to $550,000 of additional money if we didn't, if we achieved $550,000 of savings, there would have been no money coming to us. But we're not, so...
That's not how it was explained.
No, the $550 was, if you didn't get the savings, we would guarantee the savings by giving you $550 additional.
Okay. That I agree.
Right. And so $450 was allocated for the HSA. Well, we're not going to have that $450,000 of savings. So that $450 is definitely going to come. On the other $100,000 piece, if we do have some savings in the dental, will, they will only give us up, if we're estimated $100,000, if we only save 50, they'll give us 50, because we did achieve 50.
I understand that.
So that, so that's why, you know, depending, I put the whole $550 in, and somewhere at the end, we'll measure what that actual savings is. We'll come up with that number, Finance Department up the street, myself, and we'll agree on that number, and we'll, and maybe we'll have to amend our town appropriation down by some amount of money for savings. But we don't know that yet. So I put the whole $550 to show that, that money would be coming to us, and it's maintenance of effort and the rest of it. Rather than show a reduction on the expenditure side. That's not going to happen, especially in the healthcare piece.
I think the word rebate is just incorrect.
Okay.
I think that's, and I think that's where a lot of the confusion has just come from.
Understood. Thank you.
All set.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, we voted three to zero upstairs, and I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica moves passage of SCR 2015-13, and do we have a, we did have a second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Chair's going to vote no on this one. That's six to one. Next item on the agenda is Discussion and Our Vote to Approve Homeschool Instruction Requests for 2015-2016 School Year. Mr. Mitchell.
Madam Chair, there are some new applications, and I believe there are a few renewals. I would recommend passage.
Mr. Mitchell recommends passage of the homeschool instruction requests. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Teal and Mr. Denon. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Next item is New Policies. Mr. Fiorello, turn it over to you.
These are for the first readings of G-15, the Gift Acceptance Policy, and J-23, the Students Who Are Transgender or Gender Nonconforming. Those policies were tabled until next time.
Yep.
If you want, I'll just move on to Discussion and Our Vote to Approve Amended Policies. I-6, School Sponsored Field Trips of Long Duration, that did pass on a three to oh vote upstairs on Tuesday, and I would make a motion to approve the amended policy.
Mr. Fiorello moves passage of I-6, School Sponsored Field Trips of Long Duration. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? Just a quick question, Mr. Fiorello. For local, we went chaperones, one for every 10, and state, one per five.
International, one for five.
International, I'm sorry. Can't read my own writing. What did that change from? Do you recall?
There was no reset number.
Okay. Terrific. Thanks very much. Any other questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero, and that's it.
J-15 was fundraising, which was tabled.
Oh, okay.
But then we have K-2, Use of School Facilities, which we made that, again, that one small change to no longer charge custodial fees to school groups. And I would make a motion to pass that amended policy.
Mr. Fiorello moves passage of the amended K-2 Use of Facilities policy. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Mitchell.
There are none this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank goodness. We need a little reprieve here. School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. I did not forget it. Gentlemen?
On Tuesday night, I had the pleasure of the, attending the Special Education Advisory Committee with Dr. Santa, and it is the first meeting of the new year for them. They have new leadership, and as always, are looking for new members, as well as new board members. Very little in the way of commitment. They only meet once a month or so. And I would urge any parent of a special education student to be involved. They can look on Facebook, of course, because there is a page for that, and they can always contact the Special Education Office to get more information as well, or even myself.
Thank you. I know a handful of years ago, they used to have activities. So I don't know if that's something kind of in the works or not, or if you've discussed it and it didn't provide enough value.
Well, there's been talk of having speakers come in, and also just some more workshops centered around finding services for children or outside activities. There's been a plethora of ideas, but quite honestly, with the lack of involvement, it's been an issue. So...
Really? Yeah, I know there was one, and again, quite some time ago, that was about planning for students as they are maturing out of the system. And I can remember, there was strong attendance at that, so...
We've been, they've been trying to really tailor the program, or the agendas based on the enrollment that they have, and try to attract more people. I'd just like to point out that many of the special educators from the different schools do attend. So it's a great opportunity to sit, sit down with these folks, and I really appreciate their commitment to coming to these meetings.
Well, maybe we can, at a minimum, put it on the Facebook page. I don't know that we do for the school department, but we can certainly make sure we give it, that in a timely manner.
I also wanted to put out, so that you just, you know, to the, to the, to the pitch.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Denon.
I just wanted to say that I attended two open houses for my children's schools of a community just last night, I think it was, and a couple of weeks ago at North Cumberland. And they were fabulous. They were real, both of them were great. I have to say that, especially at Community, the, the teachers' excitement and everything was just infectious. Their excitement and their enthusiasm for teaching our children was great to see. I think the team teaching, especially, this was fourth grade that I was at, was just great. The teachers love it. It lets them specialize in certain areas. I think it's a great thing. It's good to see. And also, Mr. Demodica and I went to a ride thing a couple of weeks ago, and we heard that park results are expected November 16th. I think sometime during that week. They didn't say which day, just so everyone knows.
Excellent. Thank you. And is that for publics, when it's out to the public?
That's the public.
And the school department receives them maybe a week before? Does that sound about right?
That's what they say. I think the day may change, you know.
We're excited, Madam Chair.
I hope so.
Sorry for bringing it up.
All right. And we have no executive session this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Mitchell?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Denon. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:28. Thank you all.